I want to call this school board meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 15th. It is 6:40 on this evening. We are the Duluth Public Schools. This is our monthly school board meeting. We are in our new district service building, and so we want to welcome you, and we will have opportunities for celebration come the first of the year. So again, this is the Duluth Public Schools. It is our regularly monthly school board meeting. I call it to order, and Members Zdowski, Clerk Zdowski will now take role.
Member Eater?
Present.
Member Kirby?
Here.
Member Loffler Kemp?
Here.
Member Wofel?
Here.
Member Oswald?
Here.
I am here. Members Seand Home is excused. Superintendent Magus?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Present.
Deputy Clerk Zimmich?
Here.
Executive Director of Human Resources Severance?
Here.
Thank you. We're all here. So next on our agenda is number three. It's the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you're able to recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm looking for a motion to approve our agenda tonight.
The move?
Member Loffler Kemp approves, so I have a second for our agenda.
For the second?
Member Kirby gives our second autos in favor of the agenda. Say no, it's a whole vote tonight, so Clerk Zdowski.
Member Eater?
Yep.
Member Kirby?
Yes.
Member Loffler Kemp?
Yes.
Member Wofel?
Yes.
Member Oswald? I vote yes. Motion carries.
Motion carries. We have an agenda. Number five on our agenda is our School and Community Recognition. Assistant Superintendent Bonds, I turn the mic over to you.
Thank you Chair Wofel, and good evening, everyone. Members on the Board, this month we are recognizing Family Freedom Center and Sirius Aircraft. As you're all aware, Duluth Public Schools will be hosting its second annual "Unit in Our Community Back-to-School Event" this coming Monday at Bay Park Festival Park from 4:00 until 7:00. Dozens of local sponsors and community partners are helping us to make this year's event even bigger and better for students and families. With kindness and generosity, from Family Freedom Center and Sirius Aircraft, they raised over $30,000 for school supplies and backpacks to support the pre-backpack giveaway. We want to thank Family Freedom Center and Sirius Aircraft for all their supports and all they do to support our students. And I'm sure he has a few words. He's kind of been short of words and all, so I'll give Pez my turn to discuss how the backpack drive went and what you are planning to do during the event.
Yeah, so it's a servant's work we do. I love it. It's a good time. It's cool to see our kids coming to our doors one way and leaving a different way. And just being able to connect just families together and youth together with each other that usually don't interact, you know, but then also give them opportunities to do things that they usually don't get, whether that's learning different skills at the center, doing different activities outside of the center, educational opportunities that we work closely, some online with and other entities. But also be able to just provide just the stuff that we can this year. Last year we gave out about 1,200 bags. This year we're going over 2,000, you know. So we ran out of bags in 45 minutes last year. So our goal was to like really get that up, and then next year I'm hoping we get that even higher. But big thanks to like all the community people that came together to help because it wasn't one person or one organization thing. And I think I saw Nigel just bringing this on and allowing us to be a part of this event with him. So yes, at the event, we'd be giving our backpacks. We also be doing free haircuts, hair braiding, straightening, stuff like that, but then also helping kids with other resources, just and parents as they get into the school year and prepare for that, but also just life as it looks like throughout the school year. So it should be a fun day, though, as it is. Hopefully, like you said earlier, the weather hold up, but it should be good.
We're going to shake, as Pandy gets to kind of go through the line of distinction here. Come on. Thank you so much, all you, more than just this one.
Are any of your kiddos that went through your SMART program going to be at the?
Yeah, actually, two of them gone there.
Do you want to? That's right, so.
Thank you so much.
And I'm sure Member Oswald would be shaking his hand as well.
Thank you.
And again, I did hear Board members say more to Pez than just shake his hands. They do so much more for us in partnership throughout the year that the recognition is certainly because we're going to celebrate next Monday, but it is an incredible connection for our students to have the Center and to have Pez and all the partners that he works with as well. So thank you. Thank you Assistant Superintendent Bonds. Really a great opportunity to lift up one of our own. Our next item is our public comment. No one has signed up for public comment, but we often open it up to anybody that has come in that, you know, might be so moved to share a comment or two. Not any question. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is reading communications petitions. We have none this month. So we are on to quickly number eight, the Report of the Superintendent.
Thank you. And I'm just working through the technology here to cast and also wanting to make sure this works, but thinking about what we're trying to do when we have Board members working remotely, if we can try to make sure that that is accessible there. I'll also be reading. As I go through the slides, I'm going to mention the slide number so that people can follow along from home or through Board Book if need be as well. So let me, this is DSC 109. Which?
I think it's DSC.
Boardroom. Boardroom, I think the boardroom. Okay, great. Here we go. So that should be up. And then I don't think we're casting through the projector at this time, right?
No, it's just here.
Okay. But I think in the future, we'll probably do through the projector too, just so that people can see more clearly. But our superintendent's report for today, just to remind us of the work we've done recently on our mission, our vision and core values. Our mission is every student, every day, will be empowered with learning opportunities for growth, creativity and curiosity in preparation for their future and a global unity. And then also, our vision is Duluth Public Schools provides an academically engaging, safe and inclusive environment with high expectations and responsible use of resources. I think this is much of what we talked about with our referendum work that I'll be commenting on within my presentation. And then our five core values of learning: excellence, equity, collaboration and belonging. I won't read through those, but they're there for you to check out. Topics for tonight, in case we had our student representatives, I did leave a space for them, but quite often in the summer, they don't always participate because they're off doing other things. But I imagine we'll have those reports resume in September. But my main topic for today is really to talk about the referendum, thinking about the logo, the messaging and various updates that we have. So now I am on page slide three and moving to slide four. I'm sorry for that. Just wanted to make sure that it's around. The slide is there. So this is the, we're working with Rapp and Todd Rapp and Associates. It's a firm that does work on referendum. And this is our, this is both our logo for the referendum, Future Forward, November 23 referendum. And then we have a website that will be launched very shortly, and the URL for that is futureforward709.org. And know we're using 709 a little less. Sometimes we both have Future Forward Duluth Public Schools. That's a lot to write. EPS can be confused with Duluth, you know, Public Service or something like that. So we went with 709 for our URL. But it incorporates a lot of the colors we've been using with our color scheme, and I think it's very professional looking. During the unity in our community and other opportunities, we'll be having stickers and slogans and things like that. And just a reminder for the Board and for the public, it's our job as a school board and as a school administration to inform the public about what we're looking at with the referendum. It is not for us to tell people how to vote. That really is up to the taxpayers. It's up to the citizenry to decide how they want to vote. So I just want to make that clear as I'm sharing all this information, that that's what we're looking at. Moving on to slide five, really this is the elevator speech for what we're doing with our referendum. Residents will vote on a two-question referendum during the election on November, Tuesday, November 7. If approved, the two questions will provide approximately $7.9 million to protect and strengthen academic and mental health supports, expand and enrich high school curriculum, and invest in technology to help students learn. We use COVID relief funding to support these services over the past few years, which produced positive outcomes for our students. However, that funding has ended. The referendum would restructure existing debt that is currently being paid by our general fund to free up funding to help protect staff levels, provide enhanced programming for high school students and student support services, and authorize a capital projects levy to provide dedicated funds for investments in student technology. The Board intentionally developed this plan to have less economic impact on homeowners than under other funding alternatives. For example, the tax impact is significantly less than a traditional operating levy. If the referendum is approved, owners of a $289,000 home would see a tax increase of $11.85 per month. So that is the breakdown. And you might wonder why $289,000? That's the average price of a home in Duluth. So that's where it breaks down for that. We had used the $200,000 reference previously, but we wanted to make sure it was accurate with the number that we have now. So that really shows you the elevator speech of what the referendum is about. But then we list our goals of the referendum. During the last year, our district, as you know, has worked very closely with teachers, students and community members, families to create a three-year strategic plan for our school. And within that, we have our desired daily outcomes. So to make sure that we meet those goals, we have four different goal areas. One is to provide social-emotional learning for all pre-K-12 students and give access to resources to support mental health and social-emotional learning. Academic mental health and emotional health supports improve learning experience for students, which in turn improves performance. The severe impact of the pandemic on learning and our students' mental health has further heightened the importance of individualized support for long-term student success. So that's the first of our four goals, and that is on slide seven. Moving on to slide eight. The goal is enhance high school programming to provide ready-approved graduation rates. When students have more courses, course options to choose from, they're more interested in materials and more motivated to learn. Expanding and enriching high school class offerings provides students with more opportunities to develop their skills and interests and creates more equitable and inclusive school environment and improved student achievement. Our goal is for all high school students to have a clear, I'm sorry, a clear career path on graduation. So you might be thinking, what does that mean? What does that look like? There are a variety of things that we've talked about. We've talked about potentially exploring, expanding to a seven-period day, but we also don't want to necessarily lock in on that seven-period day because it might be something a little different. It might be block schedule or something along those lines. But we do want to enhance the day, have more offerings and also have more time with our students so that they have greater opportunity for graduation. The third goal is to provide relevant and engaging learning experiences through technology that support multiple pathways to student achievement. A strong technology program provides devices, software and reliable maintenance and is essential to fostering student engagement and positive outcomes. Technology enables teachers to use their time more effectively and diversify the way that they reach our students. So technology is a major piece of this. And then four, this is something as a Board that approves our budget and the public should know about. This really focuses on maintaining a budget that meets the educational needs of our students. Our district has worked very hard to put our finances in order to a point where we can maintain a balanced budget and a healthy fund reserve. We recognize that inconsistent state funding and evolving needs of our students require new strategies to preserve and enhance the quality of services for our students. So those are the four main goals of our referendum. And really, if we think about the challenges, and I, these are the main bullet points. I won't go into the details, but I can to some degree. Our main challenges are again that that one-time COVID relief funding has ended, and it threatens the progress that we've made to strengthen those students' supports. Also, that we lack a comprehensive technology integration program to equip students and teachers and staff with tools and resources necessary to thrive in the digital age. And then finally, without federal funding, our district will need to cut other important services to meet the needs of our students. And when we think about that, cost to our students, cost to achieve our goals for academic and mental health supports in our technology program extend far outside of our regular budget. As you know, we only have $250,000 allocated for technology, and that making these investments without additional revenue will require us to cut millions and other spending, which could impact and would impact classroom education, student services and staff. So that is really why we need this very desperately. And then we think, well, how will this impact our students? And this is on, sorry, on slide 12. So this will impact students by focusing on academic, mental health and emotional support, such as counselors, academic interventionists. We have reading and math interventionists, as well as the social-emotional learning models that you've heard about. You've seen us present the SEL curriculum that we've worked on and many other things like our MTSS specialists. That is all part of this. Also, better technology helps students find new ways to understand their subjects and allows teachers to use their time more effectively. Even when we think about textbooks, when I go into the East Library and I see stacks of, some of the textbooks are quite old. The thing about technology subscriptions is that those are constantly updated, so we're not having to buy as many textbooks because we can do the subscription service and it stays more up-to-date than a huge backpack full of books, which not everybody wants to carry. And then finally, a healthy budget will stir our district's ability to adapt to new challenges and protect existing programs. Again, we've been doing, and I'm sure Bart could comment that length, we've put our technology program together with a lot of effort. Sometimes it's put together with, you know, taking from one place and borrowing from another. We've done as well as we can, but without a true technology referendum such as this, it will be very challenging for us to meet the needs of our students. So then moving on to slide 13. And we talked about this a little bit already, but the tax impact. So the tax impact on people would be a dollar for the first question, and for the second question, it would be $10.85. So the total would be on that $289,000 home would be $11.85 per month. And then finally, for this particular part on slide 14, what happens if the referendum fails or only one question is approved? The referendum plan was developed as a package deal. You know that they were intertwined as two questions to achieve our goals at a lower cost to homeowners than a single-question operating levy. So if only one question passes, we'll lack the integrated plan and replacement cycle for technology, challenging our schools with a patchwork of devices, software and other higher costs. Our district will face a significant budget deficit. We'll need to make significant cuts, which would impact classroom education, student services and other staffing levels. So that's what will happen if it doesn't pass. And I would probably say if it doesn't pass, I would be wanting to move forward and try again in April. It's important for us to have this. But if we don't go forward in November, this is the only way that we'll have the money for the next school year that would allow us to avoid some of those cuts in services that we need. And then moving on to slide 15. And this is important. The referendum is a community-wide decision. Our district's goal is to ensure that everyone has the facts they need to make an informed vote on or before Election Day. So it's not for us to sway people's decisions and say vote yes or vote no. It's our job to make sure that people are incredibly well-informed so that when they go into the voters' booth, they can make that choice. And where is that voters' booth? Right there, you see information on early and absentee voting begins on Friday, September 22nd. There's information on in-person voting and when you can do that, as well as how you can submit absentee ballots, as well as links to finding your polling place. And know that the election is on Tuesday, November 7, between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., and that you must be registered to vote before casting your ballot. You can register to vote by clicking the link in our presentation, which is available online before November 7th. It saves time on Election Day. And also, if you forget to register before Election Day, Minnesota does allow for same-day registration. I know that many Board members are involved in a lot of the get-out vote pieces. It is a lot more convenient, I've seen, if you are registered. Myself having bought a house, changing address, sometimes making sure that that's all aligned before you go in. It does help that they can take care of that app and vote a vote. So really, again, this is future forward. It's what our district needs. It's something that we're about to launch. We wanted to make sure that it was ready to launch for our unity and the community event because we think that's a good opportunity for us to be able to share with the public. And we also have some final changes that are being made as we work all together with the Rapp and Associates. But this is generally a summary of some of what you've heard before. It's packaged somewhat differently, so I wanted to make sure that the Board understood what it is that we've been doing and what we're working on related to the information moving forward.
I'm looking for any Board members' comments and same with Member Oswald as well. I see that Member Loffler Kemp has her light on. And Superintendent Magus, turn your light on.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. And also, Member Oswald has her hand raised as well, so we'll get to that as well.
You can have Member Oswald go first.
Should I go first? Okay.
My question is, we talk about homeowner impact with the taxes. Do we know how much it would raise businesses' taxes?
We do, but I don't have the information right in front of me, but I could make sure that that's part of our future presentation or I could share with the Board as well. I think it's important to get that information out as well. There is some impact there as well. And I think it's important that when we're asking taxpayers to, what we are doing is we're asking taxpayers to invest in the schools. And we believe that's a reasonable long task for them, but it's important that we're also very clear as far as what the ask is. So thank you. I will make sure that we share that.
Thank you. Member Loffler Kemp?
Great presentation. Thank you. This is just an addition to at the end there, slide 17, in terms of in-person early voting. Should it also say St. Louis County Elections Office as well as City Hall? I think both those options. And most people actually will probably go to City Hall, but.
That's a great point. Pandy, can you make sure that you note that? We will make sure that our materials are updated.
I meant to comment earlier when I read through it, but thank you. And again, my question too is kind of, is there any desire, and this would be a Board ask as well or an insight, to take this current presentation and make it shareable and put it on our Duluth Public Schools Facebook? Or do you not think this is? I know this is informational for us. It's your first time kind of rolling that out. It might not be the face you want, but it is, it does have some really great capsule, you know, information.
Thank you. And actually, we do have, there's sort of a two-pager that is, contains almost all of this information. It's intended for that purpose. So that will be out. And also, the URL there, futureforward709, will have all of this information, and it will be presented as a website rather than a presentation. But that will be out within, by the end of the week.
I just like the ease of this PowerPoint. It's just clear and, but you know, that's a decision that I certainly don't have any expertise in. Just, I just think it has some really strong, quick, not-too-two-wordy types of bullet points and information. But people can access this on Board Book, and that'll be good too. I just have a, so is there a way to maybe put your business impact right into this PowerPoint as well? Or this is going to go away anyway, but, okay.
I think we'll need to think about that business impact in the future materials that we have, since this is kind of a static guess at this point. But I assure you, I've seen some of the preview documents, and I thought about sharing them, but there's still some tweaks to be made. And sometimes when you share something just visually, people want to make sure that we have a copy and since it wasn't quite ready for press time. But I assure the Board and I assure the public that the materials that we'll be sharing very soon, within the next day or two, I think our changes are due by Thursday, so it should be out by Friday.
One more comment too. I just really, it really was a great, a great point when one of the power points about impact on taxes that we say that the first question would cost a homeowner of that $289, $2,089, $1. And the second question costs $10.15. And I just think that's really kind of like a way of saying, vote for vote. Don't give us the one question because that doesn't, they are in partnership, and you've done a great job, at least informing the Board of why that is and how that is. But I think it's a great point to place that in information as well.
Thank you. And that concludes my superintendent's update. But I'm still, are any additional questions on this or anything else?
Seeing none, we'll go on to our next item of agenda, and that is our schedule of meeting events. And it always comes to us on Friday afternoons from our Executive Secretary Paquette. And coming up on the week of September 4th, you'll notice that there's a shift in our dates. It usually would be Tuesday, the 5th, but that is right after Labor Day. And so, and also this first day of school. So there is just a note that I want Board members to look at, that those are Thursday, the 7th is our policy. Thursday, the 7th at 4:30 is the committee, the monthly committee of the whole. Also, even though it's not on our schedule, because this is a schedule of meetings, but it also says events, is, you know, August 21st, so a week, this coming Monday is our community in our, our unity in our community event from 4:00 to 7:00. And I think that if Board members can be present, there is going to be opportunity to, for certainly being present and welcoming our community. And then we go to item nine on the agenda. It's Report of Standing Committees. And looking at Assistant Superintendent Bonds, we have the Committee of the Whole, and after that, we have HR Business Services with Member Eater, Chair Eater. And then we have our Policy Review Committee from Chair Loffler Kemp. So Assistant Superintendent Bonds, our Committee of the Whole meeting last couple weeks ago, August 9.
Thank you Chair Wofel. And during this meeting, we had two presentations. One was given by Superintendent Magus. It was related to our progress monitoring calendar. It's the calendar where we identify month by month the the item we would bring in to the board for discussions that is connected to our strategic plan. And so Superintendent, would you like to add anything to that item?
Sure, just really briefly, just reminding the board and the public that our progress monitoring report is really, our intention of holding ourselves accountable in a supportive way for the things that we say we'll do. We have a strategic plan in place. We have an operational plan within that strategic plan that supports the directions that we have. Those directions are support every student, advancing equity, and improving systems. And so, as we do that work, you know, the road to hell is paved with good intention. But it's important for us to make sure that we actually do what we say we're going to do. And so the action cards that we have, as well as the progress monitoring, is a way for us to have measurable outcomes and measurable results so that it's really showing what we are able to accomplish. Some of it is numeric, some of it is quantitative, but a lot of it is qualitative too, as we improve systems, as we see changes in timelines for hiring and things like that. But we really want the public to hold us accountable, and we appreciate that the board is willing to hold us accountable as well.
Thank you. And the second presentation was just a quick update related to the Unity in the Community event. And enough has been said about that tonight. But I will encourage again the community, if they want to find out about additional information related to the event, please go to our district website, ask all of information. We will also be sending out additional information related to times when families can access transportation options and so forth. So do look for additional information that will be shared later this week. And that concluded the Unity in the Community event, as well as the meeting itself.
Thank you for representing too. And during several interviews we've had this week and coming up in role of media-related events, is it true that there are additional spots left in the dunk tank? As opposed to just me?
You are correct, there are additional spots for the dunk tank. But I assure the community that you are excited and will be ready to go. But yes, there are additional spots. And administrators and other staff will also be joining the dunk tank as well.
Thanks for that report. I just have a follow-up to the presentation that we saw at the Committee of the Whole meeting with the progress monitoring. And for, I'm excited to welcome back our opportunity to see the leaders that are leading these progress monitors. So as we looked at those three areas, advancing equity, improving systems, what was the first one?
Supporting every student, advancing equity, and improving systems.
I just think that that's tied to programs and leaders, instructors, directors in our district. And to have them already know that there is these opportunities for them to come and present to the board really, I think, motivates all of us as board members to know that they'll come. So I just, I really loved that opportunity to hear about that at our meeting last month. Any other questions or comments? Then I will go to our committee meeting. That is our, it is our Human Resources and Business Services. So it's Chair Eater. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Loffler. So let's get started. We had our meeting on Wednesday, August 9th, and we started at 5:04. We had no guest presentation, so we moved on to our departmental reports. And we started out with Human Resources with a really great report from Executive Director Severance. And we looked at, the first thing I always do is look at the number of new hires, compare that to retirements, resignations, and leave of absences. And we are looking great. So that's really positive. As we know, we've moved into this beautiful building. So our HR team was able to get moved to our new building with a little bit, with as little disruption as possible. Another great update to our HR departmental updates is that the HR team now is taking responsibility of our teacher evaluations tracking. So this is going to help make sure that all of our teachers are getting the evaluations that they need to help better serve our students in the classroom, which will be directly part of our serving students every day. And part of that is giving feedback to our teachers and then having a place for them to, a safe place for them to ask questions and improve their craft. So that's great. We have a benefits update. Benefits is going great. Everything seems to be bumping along. And I believe, Executive Director, you're fully staffed now, correct? And this is the first meeting, I think that we've got to say that. I don't think... So, yeah, so that's great. We still have some openings. I'd like to bring the community's attention to, we definitely need help in our nutritional services and in our, support of our buildings and our facilities. So if you're looking for anything, there's some great videos that we got a chance to look at on the website, ISD709.org. And you can find those video on the website where they follow around one of our nutrition specialists in our schools and then one of our facility specialists. And they're really great, along with the bus driver. So those are really great snippets into what it looks like to be employed with our district in those different professions. We have an update on our contract negotiations. We have tentative agreement with three of our units, which is great to hear. Our paraprofessional units, our food service units, and our non-certified business services units. So that's great to hear. We are doing some negotiation right now with our executive employees and the principal unit. That's great. And we're also moving along nicely with our teacher union leadership. So everybody's been in great communication, and we're moving that along probably very smoothly and just very smoothly. Yeah, so did I miss anything? All right. Moving on to our child nutrition report. If you get a chance to look in Board Book, we have a 10-year meal count comparison. And it's just amazing to look, to see how many meals that our food service workers deliver to our students. We'll probably be seeing a jump in these numbers over the next 10-year period just because the state of Minnesota now has free lunch and breakfast for all of our students. We of course need more, let's see. So the yearly summaries complete for meals served this includes Head Start meals and after-school snacks. This year, total was an impressive 1.2 million meals. So that's incredible. Summer meals are ongoing, and we average about 330 children that are having breakfast and 600 lunch per day. So just another great investment in our community to make sure that our kids have the meals they need during the summer. And also, just another great place for our schools to be community resources for our community. Moving on to facilities, I believe that's where that's... Yep. Moving on to facilities, we've done a ton of work. Some of our capital construction projects are. We know that Compton Park, there's work being done at Compton Park for their playground equipment and then some other work that they have done. Ordean East Middle School turf replacement has been completed. The Lowell basketball courts have been installed. And then, let's see. We also have some build-outs happening at Lowell, Homecroft, and Denfeld for some offices. This is going to be tight just because of contractors and access to the supplies we need. Shockingly enough, PSS Track Lane 1 pond remediation is still ongoing. Construction on the hill, we're sitting in it. We all can experience construction tasks on the hill in real life. And we know that our building operators have been very, very busy this summer getting our schools cleaned and ready for our students to come back here in September. Let's see. So that completes our facilities. For our Technology Department report, I encourage our community to go into Board Book and look and just take a peek at some of the projects that our Technology Department has been completing. Transportation network infrastructure is done. DSC network infrastructure is done. Facilities infrastructure is done. Some great things that is going to be important for our schools is upgrading our AV systems and our video security camera and server upgrade that's happening at Lincoln Park and Ordean. We've also been doing a ton of work district-wide with new wireless access points and then also some new computers. So this is a really, really intensive year for our Technology Department. We can't thank them enough for all the work that they've done. Transportation, as we move on to that report. We've had some changes in staffing. We're still a few drivers short. The mechanics and the trainers have been doing some training. We've hired a supervisor instead of an assistant as we could get that position filled. And he has 27 years of school bus experience, 24 with the district. That's incredible. That's amazing. We're ongoing doing our bus maintenance and getting those buses ready and clean for our students to pick them up in September. And then just some information on how old our buses are. We have our oldest bus is 210. We have three in the 211. And we do have some new buses, but as of older vehicles, they require more maintenance and they cost the district more money. Those are conclusions of our Human Resources and our Business Services departmental reports. Do I have any questions?
I had just made notes, but you thanked them all as I go through because I really was impressed with the 10-year, you know, look at our nutrition. And it just, it takes people to do that. It takes your staff to think that it's important for us to see that information. And I love the, I love how we have developed our HR Business Committee into looking at all areas, technology, transportation, nutrition, with actually our leaders in those areas, you know, funneling the report. I know it takes time. And I'm sure in a busy day, they are thinking, I've got to type this up and send it so it's on Board Book with enough time for us to look at it and reflect and ask questions. And I know that that's time out of an already busy day. And so I just really appreciate the leaders of those units to, you know, give us that feedback as a school board because we do, they do ask those questions. People in our community that, you know, maybe are experiencing, maybe they, the bus isn't quite what they think or something. And we already get our reports. We kind of know how it's working. And again, I just want to, you know, there's the shout-out to our new bus garage too. And the buses are clean and shiny and they're pulling into their shelter area where our bus drivers... I mean, maybe we'll even get more bus drivers to apply for jobs because they don't have to plow, they don't have to get out in cold winter and shovel the front part of their, of where their buses are parked and, you know, come into a cold environment when they're, you know, coming here to this facility. Maybe they'll say, that's a great idea. I'll apply for a bus driver's job here and love it. So, but you did a great job, as you always do, Chair Eater, of highlighting all the different parts of that. And just a big shout-out. Thank you. Thanks for the report. Thanks to the people who gave it to us. And I'm good. Others?
Yeah, I thank you for doing shout-outs. I did want to do one to Bart, but Bart? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I love your four-month future forecast as well. I really wanted to comment on the videos that have been made for recruitment and just how outstanding they are and creative they are. And having our own people speak. I actually, right after the video kind of went viral, I had the opportunity to talk to Ryan and give him a personal shout-out. And, but I just thought they were very well-done and creative and thanks for the thought and the time that went into creating those. It's an exciting, we're an exciting place to work. Folks, we're an exciting place. So you made it exciting, made the video. So, thank you.
Great. So move on to Recommended Resolutions. We have a resolution for acceptance of donations to the Duluth Public School. We have $100 from Mary Adams to Lormap for an HBCU trip. So that's going to be exciting for those students. Lincoln Park from DLH. School supplies, pencils, colored pencils, highlighters, notebook folders, and what teachers love the most, Kleenex and Korax wipes. Always need those. We have three district-wide contributions for our Unity in our Community. QuickTrip, like to thank, QuickTrip, Myers-Brogman-Johnson, and then Super One Foods. So we have a tremendous amount of thankfulness for our community and the appetite out there for this event that focuses on our amazing school district, focuses on our families, focuses on our kids, brings everybody together in a celebratory mood to get ready for that first day of school. And I look forward to serving with Member Sadowski and maybe we can take another trip down the bounty. We'll see.
Sounds fun.
All right, so that will be on...
There's still some seats available on the dunk table. Go from the bounty to the dunk table.
To the dunk table. You do that. So that will be on our Recommended Resolutions. A couple of things on our consent agenda is our HR Staffing Report. We also have for finances, we have our financial reports. Our July financials will be, we don't have them right now. They're currently being audited. We'll provide those later. And that usually happens this time of year. Moving on to our fundraisers. We are approving a couple fundraisers for Lincoln, Lester Park Elementary School. It's $887 for yearbook sales. And Denfeld, the cheerleaders at Denfeld are going to be selling some DHS sticker claims for car windows at the football games. I look forward to sporting one of those around. Yeah, so that'll be $500. Moving on to our bids, RFPs, and quotes. We have none this month. Next, we move on to contracts, change orders, and leases. And what will be known for our community is a update for the contract that we have with the city of Duluth for our school resource officers. Last year, our team went through negotiations with the city of Duluth, and we did a one-year contract. This year, we're doing a two-year contract. This contract includes changes that were made with the contract in unison in community with the police department after a very long, what was it, about a year-long? About a year-long? Yeah, we did a year-long community listing session with the wonderful people at Marnita's Table. We went out to the community. We heard what the community wanted in our school resource contract. So those changes were done last year and they continue this year. Things like our SROs going to our elementary schools, which I've seen them at Piedmont several times. I'm sure they've been out in other elementary schools. It also includes those SRO officers participating in district-wide professional development. And I know that they've done that district-wide professional development. Some new information that's great is if you go to our website, you can find the SROs on our website. You can find out who they are. You can find out what they do. You can also find out some district statistics about what are the interactions with our SROs look like? How are they interacting with our staff and our students and our community? There's some other updates that are slipping my mind right now. Anything? What else am I missing?
On the website, you can also find feedback information from our families and our students as well.
Yeah. So those are some updates that we did to the SRO contract after much collaborative work with our community. And I think it's done, it's really made some positive changes with our SROs and our community. So that's great.
Can I just, I think there's probably some comment as long as you can talk about that. A couple of things. I love that on our website. If you go to About Us, our school resource officer link is right there for our community to find. And also, I really appreciated the work that our SRO, I think he's called Supervisor or the, you know, the leader of the SROs, and he would do that monthly newsletter. And I just thought it was so well-done and had pictures and different events and different data in those newsletters as well. And I believe those newsletters are on our, oh, I know they're on our website. But are they also then part of your TLE link? Is there, you know, how do our families know that those SRO newsletters, other than, I would imagine they're just here on our website, which is fine?
And actually, those SRO newsletters are produced by the DPD. So they do some for themselves and not for the website. So they have a way of communicating out to families all the information related to how SROs are interacting in schools. Our communication comes out through our TLE newsletter, as well as partner sources, our district website, where we can make any information related to SROs that's available at any point, anytime for anyone.
So the newsletters, and I know we did get them through email. I just assumed I was getting them through email because we're on the board. But those newsletters then are really within the Duluth Police Department's community of outreach?
I imagine that's their way of increasing, enhancing communication with the community related to the school resource officers. But it's not a shared website. The website is the district's communication to families to make sure that we are transparent on anything related to our school resource officers. And it is there. And you will see on our website, we try to make sure we include a lot of variety of information for families and try to make sure it's comprehensive in nature. But their newsletters are not attached to our district websites.
That surprises me. They're well-done. They're directed directly at the work of our school resource officers. They're directed directly at the work of our school resource officers within our buildings, but then they're not shared with the school district and their population?
Yes, it's, it's their communication. It's their newsletter.
Okay. Well, maybe, okay. Good to know, good to know.
Thank you.
All right. And then we also have a change order from a Volta contract. We just had a misstatement on the contract moving from 36 months to 60, 60 months. So we just have to approve that. As we move on to miscellaneous information, there's some district property updates and we can look around and look at our district property updates. Feels good. Next, we have some expenditure contracts signed with RAP. This is going to help us moving towards our November 2023 referendum services as demonstrated in the superintendent's report today. Lake Superior College for some rental space, national audio and visual, audiovisual supports for our PD on 8/29/23, excuse me, and 12/4/23. And then Smart Pass. This is a Hall Pass program for the 2023-2024 year. So those are our expenditure contracts. We have, let me go to page 57 here real quick. For our no-cost contract sign, we have one with the Minnesota Office of Higher Education. This is an agreement with MDE to waive fees for higher education application fees for our employees. And then we have no revenue contracts, Boo. And then lastly, for our grant application, we have a grant, a couple grant applications coming in from the Northland Foundation. One moving, that is, the project title is prenatal through grade three. It's early childhood and curriculum departments. It's working with some SLE and PBIS and our prenatal through grade three. And then also from the Northland Foundation preschool Head Start to do some training for our preschool and Head Start teachers. That is everything that we did at HR Business Services this month. So thank you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So we're going to make it.
I do have a question on that. And I have a comment on another item that came to my attention. Elsa Priest, our student representative, did prepare a report and she did attempt to make it, but she went to her prior location. So I do have Elsa's report at some point, maybe after the committee reports or whenever you'd like me to share it, I'd be glad to share it.
Certainly. And we apologize for Elsa's not, not seeing the, the change. We probably weren't expecting our students to return either, so we didn't make a huge, a huge reach to make sure that they knew where we were meeting. I apologize. But we will look forward to that report. And, you know, if she could get up here quickly, you know, she could give it. We wanted to see if she could drive up here, but it's okay. So thank you, Chair Heder. And that moves us to our Policy Committee and Chair Lachlan Kemp.
Okay, great. Thank you. We met on Wednesday, August 9th, and all of the items that we're going to discuss will be on the consent agenda. And just like to always say that, again, reviewing policy is one of our key roles as school board members. So appreciate all of my committee that, that reviews these and then all of us reviewing them as we vote on them. So, thank you. So policies for the first reading is policy 904, Distribution of Materials on School District Property by Non-School Persons. And the purpose of this policy is to provide for distribution of materials appropriate to the school setting by non-staff and non-students on school district property in a reasonable time, place and manner, which does not disrupt the educational program nor interfere with the educational objectives of the school district. And this policy has a variety of definitions, guidelines, as all of our policies do, procedures and the legal references and the cross-references. So this is a policy for our first reading. And then we do not have any policies this month for a second reading, but we do have policies for an annual review. And they do not need to go through a second reading because there, there's minor change, minor changes in them. The first one is policy 103, Complaints, Students, Employees, Parents and Other Persons. And really that policy just had an address change to, to our current address. But this policy, again, the purpose is the school districts take seriously all concerns or complaints by students, employees, parents or other persons. If a specific complaint procedure is provided within any other policy of the school district, the specific procedure shall be followed in reference to such a complaint. If a specific complaint procedure is not provided, the purpose of this policy is to provide, provide a procedure that may be used. Lot, that's a lot. But again, this policy we had cast last fall, October 2022, but again, the only change is the address changes. And then the next policy for an annual review is policy 505, Distribution of Non-School Sponsored Materials on School Premises by Students and Employees. And this is replacing 5165 with the same name. And, and you know, as we all, we know, we're, we're moving to, away from the thousand series to the 500 series. So, and that policy, again, the purpose of this policy is to protect, is to protect the exercise of students and employees' free speech rights, taking into consideration the educational objectives and responsibilities of the school district. And again, it has definitions, it has guidelines. We had some good discussion as we were looking at all of the information from our current policy to make sure it was in there. And then procedures. And then it does state that a copy of this policy will be published in student handbooks annually and posted in school buildings. And then the, the legal references and cross-references. So that is a annual review of that policy, no regulations. And all of these, again, will be on the consent agenda. Member Sadowski or Locult, who was sitting in on this committee, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I would just add for policy 904, this is a new policy, right? And I thought it was really solid. And when you look back at the last page for the legal references, if you just even take a peek at those, you can kind of see why we want this policy, you know, in our school district. And then I was just going to say about policy 505, thank you to all of our staff for your work on it. I really appreciated having you forward quoting because I think that was you, Patty. Thank you. That was helpful when I was reading it.
I, I too just appreciate the staff involvement in working and, and then all of us, you know, looking at them. These are all first readings?
No, as it's stated here, 904 is a first reading and, and it's also a new policy. And then the, we don't have any second reading policies, but policies for review. If there's no major changes, we only need one reading on them. And that was the case with the, the last two policies. So it will, all of these will be on the consent agenda.
And just with my years of working in our district, I just really, really encourage our staff and our workers to, to, to really understand the policies. I think it's so easy sometimes to earnestly and honestly want to do things for the benefit of our coworkers or our students or our community. And we very well might, might not even realize there's a policy that kind of guides us with the appropriate steps to go to your administration, to, you know, check these things out. So thank you for the attention to policy and so important for our community to watch our policy committee meetings and to, you know, look at all of our policies are on our website very easy, I feel, to, to, to access. So thank you.
So that is my report and our next meeting will be on September 7th at 3:30. Any questions? Anybody else?
Just a really quick comment. I want to thank the, the board and particularly the Policy Committee. We've gone through many, many policies and that's part of the board. Three-year plan is to make sure that we're, we're going through at least a quarter of our policies. And I think we, we exceeded our goal for this year, so that's positive. And I also want to say thanks to Patty Pickett for the work that she has done and making sure that we're ushering things along. Quite often she's checking in with MSBA or our legal team along with us to make sure that, that we're moving things forward. And I, I really think that, that we have a great cadence of the work now, thanks to the, the part of your bringing along.
Yes, Patty Pickett, the keeper of the policies.
I appreciate all the thanks, but I just want to say that it isn't just me. Like we have great staff here at the public schools that work on these policies tirelessly. And then they bring them to me to like form and write for you. So I am a part of it, but it's not only me. And I do appreciate the thanks and I want to give thanks to them as well.
Thank you for your committee report. And that brings us to number 10, kind of general board committee updates.
Would you like me to share the student report or would you want to?
It's a great, that's a great place to.
Great. Okay. And this is from Elsa Priest and I will not be able to, to mirror her positive energy, but, but I think you can hear in the voice in what she's written. Hello, everyone. I'm happy to be back after two months of absence. I was spending time working along with crew high school missions in Ethiopia. It was an amazing experience and I learned a lot. Summer's coming to a close and so fall sports are beginning. Football, cheer, volleyball and cross-country practices have begun. Debate had a national competition in Arizona at the beginning of summer and some students progressed to quarterfinals. A HOMPAC training session is soon for the juniors and seniors involved. HOMPAC is led by juniors and seniors to help the, support the incoming freshmen as mentors. Will be dividing into groups and helping them throughout the year, starting in freshman orientation. Students have been talking about the two music, two new music teachers in the choir and orchestra departments. We are very excited to see these new teachers and meet them this year. The student government is planning our first events of the year with welcome back game and then homecoming. We are so excited to welcome the school back in a few weeks. Some students have come to me with questions regarding the OA for the Day cellphone policy. Questions are mostly around when phones will be used, how they'll be allowed and how we'll navigate situations like emergencies or necessary contact with our families, jobs and responsibilities, et cetera. During class time, I'm hoping there will be some information shared for all of us when we begin the school year. Although some are unhappy with this change, many are also looking forward to seeing a more connected and present group of students. And that concludes her report.
Thank you, Elsa. Elsie, Elsa. Elsa. So thank you. That was great. Great to hear that energy, hear that enthusiasm to come on back. We're, we're excited as well. And under number 10, when you see general board committee updates, I just like to share that member Lachlan Kemp, myself, Assistant Superintendent Bonds and Director Brenda Sparts attended the Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Workshop. And it, it was an incredible opportunity. We, we really learned a lot about the REED Act and what the state legislature has been doing and what they are supporting and what, what that's really about. And I really would encourage, and I think I'll, I'll maybe leave my copy with Executive Secretary Pickett with the, the, the actual state statute for our REED Act because we had a chance to really dig into it too and kind of look at, you know, substantial chunks of it. But again, we had such phenomenal presenters, you know, leaders across the nation that here reside here in Minnesota, but they are incredibly connected to reading. And it was just really a thrill to be there. We also had an opportunity to, in the evening, to listen and, and learn about managing tough conversations and how to navigate through conflict and, and keep a balanced perspective and an effective communication style, even when there's conflict, which we really enjoyed and learned a lot as well. I also want to remind the, the board that we have great opportunity, August 21st, with our unity in our community. I know we'll get clearer direction from our administration with where we best will be. We're hoping that all board members can be there, but we also know you might have some conflicts. So, you know, there, if you want us to fill out the volunteer form and, and do it that way, or, or would you just like to know which one of us, who's going to be there? And, and we will, you know, I think we, we somewhat have some information about an informational table, a welcome table, where especially for referendum information, that we are getting some direction from our, our consultants to, to have presence of school board members there. Would that be the better place, but?
We have, we'll plan for a table already. So a table will be planned for you or is planned for you. But regarding the volunteerism, if you are looking to also volunteer, I would appreciate or would appreciate if you would fill out that form because then we will know exactly what time you plan on volunteering and for what stations or areas. So the volunteerism piece, yes, please complete the form, but we will definitely have a table ready for the board for communication and gathering.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have one, just to clarify. I did see the volunteer form got sent out, so I see my assignment, I guess. So do you want us at the, at the table when we're not doing our assignment? Is that how we want to work it?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I too received my assignment this morning by filling out the form. So thank you and I'm excited of all the other volunteers that have signed up. Recognize many names on there from the community. So that was really great. And look forward to being there with you.
Thank you.
Then I have one more opportunity. August 29th, I was contacted by Joan Lencourt, the Executive Secretary of Curriculum, and she's wanting some help welcoming to the opening session, just handing out the, the agenda for the day. So she was just wondering if there were board members that would be interested in that as August 29th. She hasn't given me the time. My gut reaction would be, I think she knows that you're reporting to the buildings like at 10:00, is there something? Is it at Denfeld?
It is at Denfeld. Yes, it is.
So she was going to get back to me, but an opportunity for board members to just be handing out whatever she needs for 45 minutes.
We'll make sure some additional communication is sent to the board related to that, providing more information.
Along with that, I think it's also a great opportunity for board members, if you're there or if you'd like to come, for us to be able to introduce the board members who are able to attend. And so we'll make sure that that's, that's time there so that as we do our, our welcome back to everybody, people can have an opportunity to, to say hello.
Appreciate that. That's a great idea. Thanks for that impact. Any other general board committee updates?
I'm back with the Intergovernmental Committee, Amber and I are both on that committee with two members from the City Council and then two members from the County Commission. So it was a great opportunity. I always suck up as much time in that committee meeting as I can to talk about our great schools, but we had a great discussion about the referendum and gave those other government officials some information so hopefully that they can also help spread the word and allow for the voters to make really informed decisions that come November 7th.
Yeah, I serve on the Head Start Committee and we're starting up our meetings this month and also serve on the Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund. And we're looking forward to all of our grantees that, that receive grants in May to start using that this year. And you'll be hearing some updates. that this year. And you'll be hearing some updates and hopefully some promotions around, um, the different grants that, uh, uh, staff from across the district, uh, receive through that fund. And, um, uh, uh, another, uh, committee I serve on, not necessarily directly a school board committee, but it's the, the Great Lakes Aquarium Board. It's just so exciting because we have two of our staff, additional staff in our district, Sherri Williams, uh, as well as, um, Nate Smith, uh, that, that are now serving on our board. And we have a committee around community engagement, uh, that we're just looking at additional ways, uh, the aquarium can engage with the community. They already do with the school district in many ways, but just wanted to let you know, um, the school district is also just really well-represented on that board, and it's, it's really appreciated by them and the work that they're doing to broaden their community engagement, uh, with all ages of people. So just a quick update there.
Thank you, board members. We're active, and it's interesting and exciting to hear all the different ways that you connect with the community and, and speak favorably of our district and, and lead us that way. I'm looking at number eleven. It's our consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to add to our consent agenda. Um, we are in need of adding a consent agenda, a one B one, and it's under Human Resources. It's approval of settlement agreement with employee. I'm looking for a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Kirby seconds this. All in favor, and this is a roll call?
Yeah.
Um, all in favor of adding one B one under Human Resources to our consent agenda?
Uh, Member Eater?
Yep.
Member Kirby?
Yes.
Member Lachlan?
Yes.
Member Loefel?
Yes.
Member Oswald?
We cannot hear you, Member Lo, Oswald.
She's off screen.
Okay. Um, I move yes. So, and Members Santos, obviously excused.
So motion carries five to zero. So we've added that. So then I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So move.
So Member Lachlan Kemp moves to approve the consent agenda as amended, and, um, Member Eater seconds it as amended, as a, if that's gonna be, um, number thirteen, or number twelve, actually. So, um, I'm looking for a roll call for accepting the consent agenda as it appears.
Uh, Member Eater?
Yes.
Member Kirby?
Yes.
Member Lachlan?
Yes.
Member Loefel?
Yes.
Member Oswald?
And I move yes.
So motion, motion carries five zero. Moving on to number twelve, the resolutions from committee reports. I've asked Member Lachlan Kemp to make the motion.
Okay, I move resolution B eight-two-three-three-nine-eight-one, acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute four-six-five-oh-three requires the school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor involved. And whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. And Member Eater touched on these during her report, but, uh, Laura McArthur, Lincoln Park Middle School, and district-wide will be receiving a number of, um, donations. So I move resolution B eight-two-three-three-nine-eight-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Sadowski makes the second. We'll do a roll call vote for in favor of the resolution.
Member Eater?
Yep.
Member Kirby?
Yes.
Member Lachlan?
Yes.
Member Loefel?
Yes.
Member Oswald?
Yes.
And I move yes.
Motion carries six zero. Moving on to our agenda then, we are at number thirteen. There are no special resolutions or action items, so we're at number fourteen. Are there any questions or anything that we have neglected to share, vote on, accept, motion, anything? That leads us to number fifteen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Member Kirby makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Member Eater makes the second. We'll do a roll call vote on our adjournment as well.
Uh, Member Eater?
Yep.
Member Kirby?
Yes.
Member Lachlan?
Yes.
Member Loefel?
Yes.
Member Oswald?
Yes.
And I move yes.
Motion carries six zero. Um, the Duluth School Board is adjourned.